Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees, Emory USD, August 10th, 2016. Shall we, roll call please?
Member Ash?
Here.
Member Collins Rogers?
Here.
Member Miriam?
Here.
Member Patz?
President.
All right, shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, public comments, anyone here that has, would like to discuss anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Do I hear anybody? Okay, number four, reports, do we have a representative for ETA here? CSCE, superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, I just wanted to bless you.
Bless you.
I wanted to take a moment to just update everyone, everyone is busy working and preparing as we continue to get ready to move into the new site. We are moving our district offices and turning off our phones and internet here this Thursday afternoon and moving our equipment on Friday, so we're pretty excited about that. I'd also like to report that you should be getting something in the mail if you're an Emeryville resident or maybe a West Oakland resident regarding a flyer or postcard from the school district. Did you get that already?
Yes, I did.
Oh, I hope you liked it. Highlighting some of our programs and reminding people that we have a K-12, a TK-12 site facility in the district and so excited to get that out at this very busy time. It's an important part of our communications piece, I think, for the district to make sure we're reminding all of our residents that we have, not just the school, but that we have a great site and great teachers and great programs. And was really happy that we were able to pull that off, thank you.
Since, I was gonna, so I thought we were moving in back in July, are we not able to move in when we scheduled to?
Substantial completion was set for July 25th. It turns out unfortunately, while the buildings themselves were ready to be moved into, we had a problem with the pathways, I guess, I think it's technically egress, is that how I say, the egress around the buildings? And so without having that completed or ready, or with having some problems around that, we were not able to get the elevator inspection as early as we would have liked. So that is what delayed us in terms of getting into the building.
And so if I remember correctly from the contract Turner was going to have to pay for every day we were late, correct?
I'm trying to recall the specifics of that, you may be right in terms of there being something in that language. There are reasons when, if a delay occurs and if it's the fault of the construction company, that yes, we, there are penalties that they will incur. However, there are other things that may happen and around our project, to be quite honest, it's been more about the design and the drawings as far as I can tell in terms of delays and things that have happened and not Turner. So for things that are not under their responsibility, I guess per se, that there are not penalties.
So Mr. Baker will address this at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Because it seems to me that that would be something. And then I just, you mentioned registration and enrollment and I've had a couple of people, somebody enrolling a kinder and somebody returning, having challenges with getting ahold of people and being able to walk through the process. So if we're gonna send out a bulk mailing, are we making sure we're staffed and staff knows where to direct people to, particularly if we're turning off the phones tomorrow?
We have posted on our website and we're gonna be sending out messages that we have the offices closed on Thursday and Friday. I'm trying to go back to your original question, in terms of when we send a bulk mailing or not, we don't have a lot of staff, we're doing our best, I think we have staff at the school and all that kind of.
Again, I just want to share with you, there were some really concerns.
No, I appreciate it, no, I appreciate it, we have it all laid out on our website and it's, it's, it can be a tricky process having to bring in, particularly for a new parent, bringing in papers, birth certificate, utility bills, whether or not you need to fill out an application, if you're an out of district permit or not, and going online and finishing the process. But I appreciate knowing that.
Yeah, it was just, again, it was more than one person just coming up to me and just not able to enroll and it seems to me that that is something we should be able to do easily.
Yeah, I would hope so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there's something else, but I'll let it go, thank you.
Thanks.
Superintendent's report since, or I'm sorry, board president's report, since President Affleck isn't here, I'm filling in for him for this evening, so there is none. But I do want to ask, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, no changes, thank you.
Thank you. Onto.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I did forget something, I was gonna do that in my report. Oh, I'm so sorry, just, I'm sorry, it's part of my report, can I just take a moment so that we don't have to have people wait as long? I'd like Ms. Harrell to come up during my report and just to introduce some of the new employees.
Why don't we do it when we approve them?
We can do that, I just thought it was.
That's next.
It said next?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and on that note, I move we pull the personnel action items.
I was gonna pull 5.1 warrants. Any other? Okay, with that being said, shall we have a motion for accepting item 5.2, 5.3, and 5.5?
So moved.
Do you have a second? We do have a second.
Right, you want a roll call?
A roll call please, thank you.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero unanimously. Item 5.1 warrants, actually that's, okay, warrants, just a minor thing here. There was several, or actually two items on the last list of warrants pertaining to Kingsley Bogart, the legal counsel that this district has employed, or representation on various actions. Superintendent, can you give me some clarification on that?
In terms of what the expenses were for?
Yes, please.
It's a mixture of a classified employee dismissal, some property issues, and I think that was it for Kingsley, no, not for Kingsley, for that particular law firm, it was primarily those issues, I believe.
Okay, and then I'd asked about a Better Way and you said you'd get back to me, so what are we paying Better Way for?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the supervisor for the mental health interns. And I know we get quite a deal, a bit amount, excuse me, we get quite a large amount, or sufficient amount of money from the county, Alameda County, to help with that kind of work, but the Better Way is the company we've been contracting with to assist with that.
What money do we get from the county?
Every year we get somewhere between $50,000 to $90,000 from the county, Alameda County, to assist with mental health, the interns, the different program we're doing. They would like to see us put some more money in as well because they've been really assisting us for a number of years. So we will also be soon, I think, bringing to the board a position to help with some of the supervision, primarily still funded by the county though.
So it's actually county funds?
I don't know if the Better Way funds offhand or pass through or district money, I'd have to check and I'm sorry that I didn't get to that today.
Okay.
Now item 5.4, personnel actions, Ms. Harrell?
Good evening, everyone, tonight I would like to introduce to you the staff members that we will be asking you to approve the hire on this consent calendar. I'd like to begin with Mr. Keith McGowan, Mr. Keith McGowan has been hired as the ESS high school counselor. And in addition to having his PPS school counseling credential, Mr. McGowan is a licensed marriage and family therapist intern and he has worked in the mental health field. Of his work in Hayward Unified, one person wrote that Mr. McGowan is well equipped to assist students and families in the face of the demands of higher academic rigor. And he can identify challenges and can repackage for students a perspective of hope and practical skills to redirect their lives to a positive trajectory, Mr. Keith McGowan. Not with us this evening is Ms. Remy Dillon, Ms. Dillon will be the Annie Yates Science teacher and she has been teaching science since 2014. And prior to teaching, Ms. Dillon worked as an auditor with the State of California Office of Public School Construction and at one time she was a technician for a biomedical company. We have with us Ms. Karen Smith, who will be the social science teacher at Annie Yates. Ms. Smith is an experienced teacher who has worked with a wide range of students and her training includes training from the California Gifted Symposium in managing and teaching gifted students. We now have Ms. Patrice Anderson, who will be the Annie Yates Art Teacher. Ms. Anderson's student teaching and full-time teaching experience has been with Albany and San Leandro Unified. Ms. Anderson writes that she is an art teacher who believes art permeates all subjects and can unlock access to deeper understanding and explanations of science, math, psychology, literature, and social studies. Then we have Mr. Andrew Ting, Mr. Ting will be the Annie Yates Music Teacher. Mr. Ting has over 12 years of music teaching experience in the West Contra Costa Unified School District and as a global music educator and performer. In 2008, Mr. Ting founded The Prodigals, which is a jazz ensemble emphasizing, emphasizing infusing traditional ethnic music with standard jazz idioms. And The Prodigals have performed and toured in the United States and Asia.
All right, any of you would like to speak on your behalf? All right then.
Come on up to the mic.
Well, I just want to say it's definitely a privilege and an honor to be able to be recommended for this position. I'm excited to really impact this community in a real positive way, bring some energy, you know, some new faces to the place and so, beautiful campus. I also have interest in coaching football as well, so just looking to really, you know, bring some fun to this community, so, thank you.
Great, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I congratulate the new members and welcome to our community.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
I want to also say congratulations and welcome aboard and I can't tell you how excited I am to see us have an art and a music teacher, a desperately needed counselor and, you know, social studies is one of my loves, so I don't want to leave you out. But we've been needing art and music for a while and our high school kids desperately need counseling and support and help getting into college. And so I really am excited that we've brought you onboard and welcome. And I don't know about football, but that, that I think we generally get covered, but I think that the counseling's gonna be big and the music and art and, and again, I'm sorry, I just, we've had social studies teachers, we've been wanting good art and band. And so I encourage you all, it's a very supportive town and community and particularly in the arts, you will get a lot of support. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me and I can actually help more with the social studies than I can those three, that's my much more better area, so welcome.
I do have one question for Ms. Harrell, basically the position for the counseling, that does fully restore what was previously cut or reduced?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then I have my scorecard question, where are we on the ups and the downs?
Right now, at the high school, we are, we had one late resignation. And we have offered the position, we're finalizing a few of the necessary checks, but we believe that's gonna be not a problem at all. So the high school positions should all be filled and at Annie Yates, I believe we are concluded there as well.
There was a resignation this evening, is that?
This evening?
On the, on the form, it was Annie Yates, if I read it right.
Oh, that happened a while back.
That happened a while back, so that position's already been filled.
Which one was it?
Well, I'm gonna, since it's on the public record, I'll say Hazel J.
Oh, yes, that's been taken care of.
That's been taken care of, so we're fully staffed to start the year.
Yes, we are, as of today.
As of today, excellent, thank you.
Shall we congratulate Superintendent Ruby as well and the staff for getting a jump on it this year?
Absolutely, thank you, we have one more introduction we're gonna make, thank you.
I read your introduction, but this is Ms. Remy Dillon, the science teacher at elementary school.
Ms. Dillon, do you want to come up and say anything about yourself, introduce yourself, please do. Anything you want to share, anything you want to share.
Good evening, I'm Remy Dillon, I'm pleased to be starting my third year of teaching here at Emory Unified. I'll be teaching sixth grade, science, and math and I'm really, really excited and looking forward to the new technology and the new people I'll be working with. I have two children, my son is going to be starting college, so Tuesday we leave for Texas. My daughter will be starting high school, so big transitions for all three of us. Nice to meet you all, any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you.
If she'd been earlier, you wouldn't have been the only one, I sort of.
Yeah, welcome everybody, really, really glad to have you. And Mr. Mary, Vice President Mary, one of the legal issues that they were helping us with, we created a new temporary advanced contract form this year. That was one of the Kingsley Bogart things, I forgot, which allowed us to solidify some of these positions quicker and hopefully making sure we kept and were able to retain the people we wanted.
All right, with that in mind, shall we have a motion?
So moved.
I will second the motion. Roll call please.
So this is a roll call for, for item 5.1 and 5.4.
Yes.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Items passed four to zero.
Congratulations.
And don't feel like you have to stay, just was, you know, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you don't, you don't need to stay, thank you. No, you're fine, you guys are all fine to go now.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then there was two.
Yes. Are we on to discussion items now?
Yep.
All right. Item 6.1, recommendation for Measure K Partial Tax Committee Recommended Motion?
Yes, go on up please, thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself to the board, I think I met you once before, but no.
I think I've met all of you except for Member Ash, my name is Heather Streets and I am the newest member of the Parcel Tax Committee. And I am here to read a letter that outlines our latest recommendations. Dear Board of Trustees, the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee met on July 7th, 2016 at the district office. The purpose of this letter is to highlight some of the requests and recommendations the committee has in relation to management of the parcel tax. One, the district should plan overall and parcel tax budgets by using projected revenues determined by the Alameda County Tax Assessor's Office. This will help the district create predictable plans for budgeting with parcel taxes. Two, projected parcel tax revenues for the current fiscal year exceed what likely revenues will be and we recommend that you adjust your overall budget accordingly. The projected revenues and expenditures presented to us are in excess of $100,000 more than the revenues received in each of the last two years. Number three, additional money should be spent as recruitment and retention to incentivize quality faculty to come to Emory Unified School District. In particular, while we recognize that this has been done to attract math and science teachers, we would all, we would like that the district use it for art and music teachers as well. Number four, the committee would like to receive data on the number of seniors receiving the, excuse me, the senior exemption at our November meeting. Number five, we ask the staff to provide us with the breakdown of how parcel taxes are expended both between elementary and secondary school levels, but also between programs and full-time employees. And finally, number six, we ask the staff to develop a glossary of eligible funding categories under the parcel tax so that committee members and the public may better understand how their parcel tax funds are being spent within Emory Unified School District. Thank you for your continued stewardship of the parcel tax and for receiving this update and if you have any questions, feel free to contact our Chair, John Bowers. Since this was my first meeting, I have very limited information, you're welcome to ask questions, but I'm not quite sure if I'll be able to answer any of them.
All right, thank you for bringing these things, thank you, thank you for the update. And I do have a question for Superintendent and this may be go to the Financial Department with Doris, Ms. Doris Sue. Based on these recommendations or requests from the committee, how do you plan to implement these items in, within this next year?
I think the best thing for us to do is for Doris Sue and I to go through these and make sure we have a plan in place. We want to be careful, number two is a good example, if we believe based on current revenues that we have more money coming in, I think the Parcel Tax Committee wants to make sure we have a plan for how we're utilizing that money and spending it. So we don't have unnecessary carryover if we can, so based on previous conversations with the committee. So I think the best thing for us to do is for Doris Sue and I to proceed through these and come, make sure we have a plan to move forward and so that we're also ready on how to respond to these for the November meeting.
I'm sorry, can you go back, I'm not reading this as they're expecting more tax revenue, I'm reading this that we're over projecting.
Maybe I misread number two, the revenues will exceed likely revenues will be and I thought I read number two is that they are.
So they recommend you adjust your overall budget accordingly because they will, sorry, your projected parcel tax revenues are too high?
Exactly.
Okay, so I misread that, so.
But, I mean, okay.
I think I may have misread, I'm just looking at it quickly here, projected parcel tax revenues for current, exceed what likely revenues will be and we, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. So I appreciate the correction, I think still, I think the thing that's for Doris Sue, the plan should be that Doris Sue and I go through these and determine what we need to do, if we need to make adjustments.
So can you report back to us next time?
Sure, well, let me ask you a second, but you don't mean the next meeting, the board meeting, do you, Ms. Doris Sue's out on vacation right now, so. I don't know, I wouldn't recommend that this is a priority for us as we're moving into the building and everything.
When is the next meeting that you have?
Not until November and so if it's, if you'd like me to attend the next meeting, if there is any follow-up that comes after your conversations with Doris, I'd be more than happy to come back.
Yeah, I just would prefer a little bit of time to, with the opening of school and moving and transition to a new building, I don't think that, if the board is willing, I don't, I don't think that it's unreasonable for Doris Sue and I to have a little bit more time to go through these.
So I guess, and I'm fine with that, I totally get that you need more time, I guess my question is if we've submitted a budget that we've signed off on that has a $100,000 error on it, I'm, you know, and I know budgets are tight. I just am concerned that we, you know, we don't want to start down a path with a deficit because of an error.
No, absolutely, I think that we could have this back to you before the second meeting September, is that fair? And the reason I say that is because the other thing that Doris Sue will do between now and then is she will adjust all of her budget planning numbers based on the new employees, some of them who've just signed contracts in the last week or two or over, over time. We have not yet received all of their paperwork for benefits, which ones have family benefits, which ones are only requiring single benefits, so all of that will change her budget numbers. And so that's one of the things she does every September. So then when we come back to you, we'll have a little bit of more accurate accounting for, here's what we had to do or here is how things fell out based on the new employees, some who need, who will cost us more money just in terms of salary and benefits and other employees.
How would this sound, just to facilitate Member Patz's request, just to concentrate on item two by the next meeting, that's, I think it's relatively simple to do. And then by the next meeting, they have these other five addressed accordingly. Is that, is that possible?
It's, anything's possible, it's just, I would ask the board to consider that we're doing, in the next two weeks, we're opening school, we're doing training, we're moving staff. And so it's possible, but I'm not gonna have accurate numbers though until Doris Sue, and Doris Sue's on vacation.
So let me, let me, let me ask you this, I guess the question is what are you guys projecting as income and Doris Sue should be able to get that to us, I mean, when is she back?
I don't.
So that's really the only question, right, if, and let's just call it, you know, if we're projecting $300,000 of tax revenue and the Parcel Tax Committee says for the last two years we've only gotten $200,000. That's all we need to know is what are you guys projecting and what did we receive the year prior?
Oh, that's fine, we can do that, yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm not asking you to change any budgeting.
Oh, I thought you, I was thinking we were gonna to formally go through and try to create accurate numbers.
I just want to know if we're short $100,000 based on, and I'm worried about the income side, the expenditure side fixes itself.
Got it.
Right?
Okay, we can do that.
Once the track bounces, we're good.
Sure, so are we short $100,000 or not, and we'll come back with those numbers.
And then, yeah, and thank you.
Okay, appreciate the clarification, we can do that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much and pleasure seating again. And welcome aboard. Item 6.2, approval of contract with 360 degree, 360 degree therapy?
Good evening, Ms. Harrell was telling you a little bit earlier about the fact that we're fully staffed in the special education department. We had three staff resignations at the end of last year and we tried to direct hire each of those positions. And we were unable to hire or fill one of the special education teacher positions at the elementary level. We had a number of applicants, but going through the applications and actually interviewing from the, some of the candidates, we did not determine that there was a qualified applicant for possible hiring for the district. So one of the things that school districts do in that situation is they reach out to a number of non-public agencies who are actually out there trying, acting as headhunters, trying to look for jobs for candidates that they have. Typically, these are people that are relocating to the area and haven't secured a job with another school district. So we interviewed a number of people from different agencies and selected an elementary teacher with 360 degree therapy. And we have a contract before you that has been fully vetted by the SLPAs. And this is the same contract that all school districts in the state of California are using when they contract out with a non-public agency. If you have any questions about the contract, I'm happy to answer those.
So take it, this is a, this is a new contract the district is entering.
This is a new contract, it's a one-year contract, the employee will be working 182 days, seven hours a day. And the employee, and the position will be posted in February as an open position and this particular employee could apply as well.
Okay, great, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
So you actually have selected the candidate from 360?
Yes, we have.
Because it, I'm not a big fan of theirs as an NPA, they, they tend to overpromise.
I've had nothing but a stellar positive relationship with them for the last month and I've met with the candidate more than once.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. And so we won't be trying to direct hire until February?
Yes.
All right, and I'm saddened to hear that this was not included in the list of vacancies. And the teacher's fully credentialed?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, just in terms of the master contract, it does say that the cost of the contract at the end was $111,000, almost $112,000.
Yes.
Was that just for that one particular position or was that for the?
Yes, so if you calculate a seven-hour day for 182 days, the rate is $80 an hour, that's how you get the cost of the contract.
Can I ask for a clarification about what Member Patz just said, I'm confused, you just said you were disappointed to hear it wasn't advertised?
No, I was disappointed to have somebody come up and say we have filled all of our positions, we're good to go for the start of school. And then two agenda items later say, okay, we don't have anybody in this position, we have to pay somebody, an agency, $80 an hour to staff a position.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand, because I know we, you had said that we were trying, we tried. we tried everything we could to hire somebody. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And part of Ms. Harrell's comment was probably related to the fact that she knew that we were staffing these unfilled positions with agency staff with your approval.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case, but that's fine.
There'll also be another contract coming to the next board meeting for the speech therapist position that we were also unable to hire. It's not on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so now we have two vacancies in special ed.
Well, I don't, they're not vacancy. I guess it depends on your, how you consider them based on the timeline. Those positions are now taken care of from an HR standpoint. They're filled. So, I don't think Ms. Harrell was trying to be disingenuous with the board. I think that those positions are taken, all the positions as of right now are taken care of.
True.
So, no, the positions are not taken care of. The positions are still vacant. We're just getting the services outsourced. There's a difference. Right? At a cost of almost double. Right?
Member Pat's, I don't know what exactly you want me to agree to. I, it's...
I want to not equivocate over what the word vacant means.
Well, okay. From an HR standpoint, which is what I said the first time, the positions are taken care of. So, I think I'm going to disagree with you whether or not they're taken care of or not, whether or not vacant means vacant now or vacant indicates that we have positions that are not filled, which is not the case since we have agencies lined up and contracts in front of the board. I don't think from an HR standpoint for an HR director to say that we don't have open positions right now, or to say, I don't remember Ms. Harrell's exact words. I don't think that she was trying to be disingenuous with you. So, if you would like to highlight that in your mind, and your, that these are vacant positions, even though we have agencies lined up, even though Ms. Steele has gone through a lot of work and time to coordinate and contract with them, I think that's fine. So, we can disagree on whether it's appropriate or not to call these vacant positions at this point or not.
And that would be pretty typical, is to continue to call them vacant positions that are being temporarily staffed by non-public agency. And we'll post these open positions in the spring.
So, I think, again, that's the phrase right there. They're vacant positions being filled by non-public agencies.
Correct.
There's a, there's a position control number. There's FTE budgeted for it.
That's correct.
Right?
And those salary savings will be transferred to a non-public agency budget in order to pay for those services.
Plus additional funds to cover the cost overruns of going to a non-public agency.
Yes.
So, is that a little bit clearer for you?
Member Pat's, I am not going to entertain this conversation with you any further. So, it is absolutely clear to me what you're doing right now. I think it's clear to everybody.
Thank you. I appreciate you for clarifying what I'm doing right now. And I'm not sure I understand.
Member Pat's?
Yeah?
I think, I'm not, I'm going to stop. Okay.
Yeah.
I just find it mind-boggling that we're going to pay somebody $80 an hour for a job that, I mean, if we, if we can't fulfill it and we're going to pay somebody in terms of a master contract to go and look for this job that still has not been filled and school starts in 12, well, we have orientation in 12 days. It's just a little last minute, especially with the semester getting ready to start. In terms of a position for a special education teacher, if we can't do it, then why are we paying someone else to go about it for double the cost when we should just keep on trying instead of pushing that money?
Because we have children who need somebody in place. That's why.
Right. So, we should have found that, we should have found those people.
We can always say we should have found people, but in special ed, math, and science, these are hard to fill positions across the country. There are not sufficient numbers of teachers who are of high quality. We do not just hire somebody who walks in the door and has a pulse. If they do not meet the standards of director of special ed, they are not hired.
I can give you a little bit more information on that. We actually posted and started the hiring process immediately upon receiving resignation back in June. Unfortunately, many of the candidates who applied had no elementary school experience. In fact, the bulk of the candidates were teachers from the high school level who would not have the skills that we would need to teach basic reading and math skills at the elementary level and did not have any of those experiences. We went through multiple candidates who, even after we did reference checks, were hired away from other districts who offered higher contracts, a greater salary. So, all attempts, and I appreciate your comment about how important it is to have our own teachers in our own community. And I can assure you that I exhausted all resources to make that happen and was uncomfortable waiting any longer to secure a teacher for our students because we have staff development coming up this next week. We have a number of orientation meetings for teachers. And in order to secure contracts and get everything into place, it does take anywhere from four, six, to eight weeks to make all of that happen.
And I will stand up for Dr. Steele here on this. I, just from being in the industry, I know how difficult it is to find sped teachers. And then it'd probably double for a speech therapist. And so, I do appreciate, I do appreciate the efforts you put in there. And we'll say, while I wholeheartedly agree with you, Brittany, the, we want our own people in place. The buy-in is just incredible. It is just a phenomenal challenge right now.
By temporarily staffing this with a non-public agency, it gives us another year to actually go out early and secure an outstanding teacher, which we were able to do this year from an opening last year. We had a vacancy last year where we were able to do a long-term substitute teacher at the high school and advertise that position in February. And we were able to hire an outstanding individual that I'm sure you're going to hear about over the course of the year, who was a full inclusion teacher, who's a transition teacher, who's going to be working in our middle school. So, sometimes we have to do a one-year fill with an agency to give us more time to really find the person we truly do want to join our community permanently.
Dr. Rubio? With, I believe there's a survey or a request for staff to basically give their intentions last spring pertaining to their, whether they're staying or going.
That's correct.
Was this offered to your department as well?
Oh, all teachers were offered that, yes.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So, basically, this was after that deadline for their acknowledgement, whether they're staying or going?
It wasn't after. Those, the teachers, I think, and even the special ed teachers had indicated whether or not they were leaving or not. So, that was, the California Teachers Association called. They were unhappy that we were requesting that information in May, or I think it was late April, because they thought it was too early legally. We reminded them that we were a small district. And we reminded them of some other education code we found that allows small districts to firm that up earlier. But, it was, to answer your question, we did know by, I think, the beginning of May or end of April.
Which is still very, very late.
Which is late in my mind, yes.
Because just to post and advertise for 30 days and
Right.
that puts you into June, and then you schedule interviews. You're into July. You're checking references, and all of a sudden, it's August.
There is education code that most districts have to follow, which means that they can't pin teachers down, I think, till the June 30th, I believe.
I'm going to get ahead of myself here, but you said you're going to bring back a speech one
Yes.
next time. Are they on the, I think they're on the teacher's schedule, are they not?
Not, our, our speech therapist has a separate salary schedule.
Okay. So, one thing I'd love to have the conversation, and again, I'm sorry to get ahead of myself, is, you know, that sometimes is the deal breaker for speech therapists because the agencies offer so much. So, if we could look at that, that would be helpful.
The, the range for hourly wages for the speech therapist through non-public agencies was anywhere from $80 to $110 per hour. So, one candidate that we were looking at actually could have cost $140,000. And they're able to get it. If you don't offer the contract within a short period of time, they're already being offered a contract from your neighboring districts. Any other questions regarding staffing for the special education teacher vacancy? If not, I'd request approval of the contract so I can move forward and bring that person onboard with an orientation as soon as possible.
With that being said, do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers? Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat's?
Yes.
Motion passes for to nothing.
Thank you for support of the process.
Thank you.
So, the next contract is with ed supports. The last two years, we've been opening programs that the district has typically not operated. In the past, we have sent students who have more moderate, severe disabilities, particularly in the area of autism or severe behavioral challenges. We have placed those students with other districts and paid other districts to educate them as well as paid for the transportation in order to bring those students back to our district or maintain them in our schools. We've had to expand our programs. Preschool is one of those programs that we started two years ago. And one of the ways that we've been able to maintain those students in the programs is to provide behavioral aid services. We don't currently have positions in HR for behavioral aids. We have instructional aids. And so, we've been looking for, we contract out for aid with this particular agency all of last year and been very successful in terms of providing aids in the preschool program that are trained in what's called ABA or Applied Behavior Analysis, highly trained in terms of data collection and working with students that are primarily non-verbal. These particular employees are supervised by the classroom teachers and by myself. And the contract requires that the agency send out a clinical supervisor who's a board-certified behavior analyst to actually meet and do provide ongoing training to those staff members while they're in our classrooms. So, this particular contract is to continue three of those aids in the preschool program. Just as a way of a reminder, we place up to three students in each of the Head Start preschool classrooms. So, we actually have six students that we've placed in Head Start. There's an aide in each classroom. The reason why we have a third aide is we have a new student starting with us. And one of the agreements we have with Head Start is if we know that the student has some challenges behaviorally, that we provide a transition aide for the first 30 days. And then we meet to determine whether that aide support needs to be continued. But, that's the, part of the program development is that each of the Head Start classrooms will have a behavioral aide to support our students who are placed in that particular classroom. We also had a cohort of students in TK who are now moving up to kindergarten, primarily with autism. Another student with just pretty significant behavioral challenges. So, the group travels as a cohort to the general education classroom or to the learning center. And there is a behavioral aide that works with that group as well. So, that's a fourth aide. And we have a student who was in the middle school who will be moving on to the high school, who's IEP calls for a full-time behavioral aide. And so, that's where the fifth position is. And all of those positions will continue. There was an additional aide this last year with a particular student that is no longer needed. The particular contract provides for the minimal number hours of support. So, in preschool, it's a three-and-a-half-hour program every day. So, each of those aides would be contracted to work three-and-a-half hours. In the elementary school, it's a six-hour position. And at the high school, it's a six-and-a-half-hour position. The wages for those particular staff members are $40 an hour. Any questions about the contract or the services or program operation?
It's essentially the same contract that, from the previous...
Exactly. We use the same contract for all of the non-public agencies.
So, given that we pay a premium to use outside people, would it not make sense to, and I know you don't want all five to be internal because they're the transitory nature of the population?
Right.
But, to have two or three of our own in-house staff, is that just not possible?
Our goal is to, is to really take a look at the instructional aide position this year and look at the kinds of training that people would need to be successful as a, to provide behavioral support as well, especially working with students with autism. As you know, there is a certain skill set that the staff members need to be trained and maintained. It's something that this district, I think, has tried to do intermittently. But, because of staff turnover and not having the people there to keep that training ongoing, we haven't been able to maintain that kind of training program for our staff members. But, that definitely is a goal of mine, a personal goal, is that we try to develop our own capacity to provide all the supports and services that we need for our students. We haven't been able to do that up to this point. This particular year, we have an agency that has indicated that they would be willing to put together with us a training program for instructional aids that would help make them competent and confident in terms of dealing with students with autism and using a picture vocabulary system, taking, doing discrete trial training and taking data. All pretty complicated tasks that need someone with that particular training to supervise them. And we don't have a member on our staff right now who has that training or expertise.
I love that you're talking about taking the year to figure that piece out. I just think it's really important that, you know, there's a big difference between an agency that's paying, you know, that $40 isn't going to the aide, and the agency uses that to provide the training.
That's true.
And so, if we build those FTE, you know, they're, they're good classified positions for people who live local and...
Absolutely.
And so, I just, I really, I really want to emphasize that if you're going to, you know, if you're going to take a year and really come up with a solid plan, I will fully support that.
I appreciate your support. That's absolutely the direction we're going.
And that's the direction we need to go because we want to have in-house people as much as possible. So...
That's a good point.
Yeah. I appreciate the work that you've, and the research that you've done to, you know, get these positions, especially with the aides in the classroom. I sat in a couple of the classrooms during the previous school year and some of the children that do have autism. It's, it's best to have that one-on-one attention sometime to narrow in and make sure that they are tuned in to what's going on in the classroom. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Ms. Steele, it's not directly related probably to this, but I just wanted to ask, I think, Dr. Steele, sorry. The, with the partnership we have with the YMCA, they're still really helping us quite a bit with the placements. Is that correct?
This is the most perfect partnership we could ever have. Not only are their classrooms tailored to really develop social, recreational, and appropriate behaviors for our students. They're easy to work with. And the, and so, they provide an appropriate program. They provide a great access to non-disabled peers. We have a great working relationship. And it is saving the district considerable amounts of money to serve our students here in our own community rather than sending them elsewhere. The cost savings alone in the preschool program pay in excess of the contract that you're considering right now.
Great, thank you. Any more questions? Do we have any public comment?
So, absent that, I'd like to encourage the board to approve this contract so I can select the individuals that have been working with us in the past and see if they're available to continue working with the students that they know in school, starting in just a couple of weeks. Preschool's going to be starting, Head Start the same date as our district students starting on August 25th.
With that being said, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat's?
Yes.
Motion passes for to nothing.
Thank you very much for your consideration and your support this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Steele.
Next item is 6.4.
Yes, thank you. This is asking for the board to consider approving a yearly agreement we have with the California Department of Education for Child Development Services. I believe this comes before you every year.
Any questions on that? Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Dawn.
Oh, sorry. Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat's?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is 6.6. Next item is 6.6, 6.5, I'm sorry.
This is similar inasmuch as this also becomes before you every year, asking the board to approve formerly designating those personnel who are authorized to sign contract documents with the CDE. And I believe on the document you have the names of myself, Ms. Doris Sue and Marion Harrell, though I'm noticing we have a typo on Marion's name. So we'll, we'll fix that, I'm sorry.
I'll misspell it. So, do we have a motion to accept?
We do have to do public comment.
I'm sorry. Thanks. Public comment?
And I move pending the spelling verification approval.
Thanks.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Motion passes for to nothing unanimously. Item 6.6.
Okay. This item is asking the board for approving our public disclosure of the AB 1200 form that the county always wants to have from us when we make any changes to salary schedules. As you recall, the board approved these changes already earlier in the summer. And this is coming to you so that we can pass this form on to the county.
Does anyone have any questions? Any public comment? Do I have a motion? For item 6.6.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Okay. Item 6.7.
Thank you. Item 6.7 is our first reading of the Educator Effectiveness Plan. This educator effectiveness money is new money from the state that the state, how do I say this? There aren't many restrictions on this, on these funds. And really because we see these funds and one of the expended, authorized expenditures are to promote educator quality and effectiveness, it's our belief that we would like to take the action item already approved by the board in the LCAP of the equity work we're doing with the Pacific Educational Group that we started in the spring, that teachers who were participating and staff who were participating here at the district as well found to be very, very helpful and effective in dealing with issues of race, looking at our own perspective on race and how that interferes or affects or helps or doesn't help us in our work with students. We thought it made sense with, what was really kind of lucky timing with this money coming down from the state, that we could use this money instead of district funds or other funds to continue that work related to one of our district goals and our LCAP goals.
So that money was earmarked from the state?
Yeah, it was, we hadn't seen this kind of money in a while. And it came out, I believe, in the late spring. And the only requirement is that, well, one of the few requirements is that there are two readings around the money. And it made sense to us based on the amount of money that we could continue and expand the work that, as we were hoping and planning to do and as the board has approved as an LCAP action already. And why wouldn't we take advantage of having this money available since we believe the equity work really is about being as effective as we can as educators?
So essentially we've had a track record from our prior experience, correct?
Absolutely. Dawn Turner, as I think I mentioned in the write-up, said this was the best training she's ever experienced in her career. And, and we, I, I think many staff would agree, it was very helpful. It was difficult. There were, there were certainly different meetings where there were tears and there was confrontation and conflict in dealing with issues of race. And when it's well facilitated, like it really has been by this organization, I think it's meaningful for us. And of course, it's not, I can't, I'm not going to claim that this is new work I've brought to the district. I think it's, the district has a good, long history in this kind of work. And I'm happy to partake in continuing that.
This was a, just a update?
First reading.
Any questions?
So if this is the first reading, I noticed the next item is to approve the contract.
Oh, it should be for a first reading. If it's not written up that way, then we
Oh, okay. You just asked for a first reading, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So this would also, this would come back, both of these items would come back to the next board meeting?
To the next board, and you'd come back for a second reading?
To ask for your approval, yes, for a second.
There's no further questions? Item 6.8.
And 6.8 is the description of the different components. The component number one beyond diversity is what the staff went through in the spring. And the other components, we've, we've asked them to detail those out and break those down so that you would have that, so that we would have and that you would have the breakdown in front of you.
Any questions on that?
Did we look at other entities to provide this type of support?
To some extent, we did. We, the other entity that we looked at was the National Equity Project, which was the organization that we had a history with. I will tell you, just, I don't know how scientific what I'm about to say is, but the initial impression that we had was that, and I believe it panned out to be the case, that this organization had a lot more substance to offer in terms of comparing right now. I, no offense, Men's and National Equity Project, but I don't know, I don't know the group. I know they have a lot of history with the district and, close history, I think, with relationships and people. But, but this seemed to be, we're always trying to find, you know, the, the most effective work in our experience based in the spring was that it was, it was very, very good.
I mean, I'm a fan of Mr. Singleton's book and I, I do appreciate his work and so may be that. But I'm just, you know, we're spending a lot of money, you know, for this work. It's upwards of $5,000 per day. And I, and it's $60,000 total. And, you know, I love the educator effectiveness funds. I think that's a wonderful opportunity that I'm glad the state released those monies. But I just don't know if we're getting bang for our buck. It's quite pricey. And so I guess, you know, and I, I just think a contract that large should go out. And then my other question is, I don't see anything in here about building anything beyond race. You know, we, we really, you know, we, we don't see anything in, and we've talked about it before, about LGBTQ issues and training around that. And I know that's a challenge in our schools. And so I just would love to see something on that as well. I mean, it's, you know, and then, you know, and again, I would love to see something on critical, culturally responsive, you know, pedagogy and some more direct stuff. I think the conversations are great, but when you talk about educator effectiveness, I'm thinking of, you know, Dr. Muhammad and Dr. Hawley's work around that. So I guess my question is, why are we putting all our eggs in one basket? And did we look and see what for almost $70,000 we can get? You know, I think this is very sparse. And I'm, I'm also concerned that we're spending a significant amount of money on training staff that I feel should already be trained. You know, if we're, if we're doing directors and superintendents and school boards, that, that I feel like is money we're taking out of the classroom. So, you know, and principals as well. I, I, again, I think we have $10,000 allocated to just that. So I, I would like to see that more, or we have more than that, actually, $20,000 or $30,000. And I feel like that's not going to impact the kids nearly as much as bringing in something like critically responsive pedagogy or, you know, LGBT trainings and things like that. So I just, I guess that's my big question is, is I'd love to see what we considered, you know? And, and I know you said it wasn't scientific and then sometimes you do have to go with that, but I would love to see outcome data. You know, what is the impact pre-post? And if they can't provide that, then
From their other work in other districts or?
Yeah, just in general, you know? And again, I, I think you'll find no problem getting good things from Mr. Singleton. I think he's been around a while and done this, but
Got it.
You know?
And I'll ask, I think those are good questions. I'll ask also about the, the things you brought up and find out if we can. And if I can, I'll have Mr. Singleton come and see if he's available or not.
Well, again, and that's what I don't want. I don't, I mean, the others may, and I, I, you know, I'd love to have, I love listening to him speak. But I want to hear that we, you know, we price shopped, we topic shopped, and we, we did some vetting of our own. I, I know, I, I, he can come and talk to me about how great he is and how great his program is. That's not what I want to hear. I want to hear that we did some comparison shopping. You know, I feel like we spent more time looking for TVs than for teacher training. And so I want to make sure that for $70,000, we really have the biggest impact.
Well, the, the other thing I guess we can do is we can see, and this is, you know, it's difficult, but we can go ahead and take a look at, are there other organizations that, and which organizations do this work? I, I don't know them offhand enough to know who besides the National Equity Project and this group. But we can take a look and shake the trees and see what else is out there.
Yeah.
And I'll try to get the answers to those questions as well.
Look up Dr. Hawley and Dr. Muhammad. I think they're equally expensive, but he talks about the classroom and really is very dynamic.
Okay.
Dr. Hawley, I don't know Dr. Muhammad.
Got it. Will do.
Any other questions? If that's the case, then public comment? Since there is no public comment, roll call, please.
There's nothing to vote on.
Oh, okay, first reading, sorry. 6.8, thank you. Next item is approval of resolution number two, authorization of disposal of surplus or obsolete property.
Yes, we're bringing this to the board to ask for your approval to dispose of some obsolete textbooks. I'm happy that we were, staff was able to get some money back for the first few pages of these books, but many of them are not unfortunately of any value to textbook resellers. So we wanted to bring this to you formally before disposing of them.
Any questions on that? Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second it. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Resolution passes for to nothing.
Can I ask a quick question? Dr., was there a specific reason that we didn't have John Baker present to us this evening?
I don't know if there's a specific reason. Mr. Baker usually presents at the second board meeting every month. And he'll be presenting at the city schools meeting, which I believe is next, August 18th.
Okay. Thank you.
And next is the board reports or announcements. Any reports or announcements? Since there is none, next item is item eight, calendar review.
All right. So we have our city schools meeting, August 18th, which I think will be our last city schools meeting here at Ralph Hawley. I believe it's 5:30 PM, I think it's the usual time. And then we have our next board meeting on August 21st, 4th, excuse me. First day of school on August 25th. And our ECCR ribbon cutting on September 1st at 10 AM. And our semi-annual board retreat, sorry, August 27th at 9 AM.
Why are we meeting here for the 18th?
City staff and our staff here agreed that we thought we'd have one more meeting. I believe we're meeting here, I'll double check. But I think we wanted to make sure that the parking was in place. And I don't know what, I know the parking's being finished right now, but I don't recall the exact conversation. But I think we decided to have it here, if I'm not mistaken.
So will it be ready for the ribbon cutting on the 1st?
And I, can you, when you say will it be ready, do you mean will the site itself be ready? I believe so. I have no reason to not think it won't be ready.
Okay, then.
Does he know other items? This meeting shall be adjourned.